Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Arlington Board of Selectmen for Monday, January 8th, 2018. We're meeting at 7:15 PM in the Selectmen's Chambers on the second floor of the Arlington Town Hall. I am, my name is Joe Kuro. I'm joined here in our business by our Vice Chair, Mr. Kevin Greeley, by Diane Mahon and Clarissa Rowe. Mr. Dunn is on his way dealing with traffic right now. He will join us in progress. We're also assisted in our work by our Board Administrator, Marie Karpelka, Town Council, Doug Hein, and Town Manager, Adam Chapdeline. Martin Luther King once said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others?" It's worth thinking of as we approach the anniversary of his birth a week from tonight, which is commonly recognized as a day of community service. So, we move on to our first item of business this evening is...
Oh, I am sorry?
No, Mr. Chair, if I may.
I apologize.
Just before we start, can I say what a pleasure it is to be sitting here on this board with Clarissa Rowe again.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley.
I assume you'll tell me what to do as always?
I will.
Okay.
I will.
Do I have to listen?
No. You never have before. I'm sounding a little froggy tonight. I apologize.
It's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to serve with you for the first time on this board, too.
That's right.
Excellent. I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
And everyone knows I love Ms. Rowe, so that goes without saying.
Thank you. So, our first order of business this evening is Norway Maple Tree Removal at 8 Higgins Street, Dr. Mamory Cohn. Just to set some context, we, the Board does serve as an appeals body for tree removal hearings. When there is a request for the removal of a public shade tree, there is first a hearing with the town's tree warden, Mr. Laqueeve, who is with us this evening as well. If there are any objections raised, the matter is then referred to this Board. So, Mr. Laqueeve is here to provide some context. We have all of the background in our packets. We have read it. Is Dr. Cohn here to explain what the nature of the petition? Yeah, please, step on up to the mic.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. I wish you a very happy, healthy, and successful year. So, the reason why I ask, request to have a tree removed is only based on safety because the tree is very close to my house and specifically next to my son's room. And when you see the tree, I sent the pictures. The tree doesn't look healthy. And I have not been living in that area for a long time, but I have been in Arlington almost 10 years. So, I love Arlington. I have my neighbors here, Mrs. Magnuson and Mr. Magnuson, and also Mr. Nyberg, who have been living in that area. They know more about the tree than me. So, at least what I experienced with the tree, the tree has like three main branches and the middle branch is completely rotten and split. And I think that happened a few years ago, I'm not sure. And the one that is above my house doesn't look safe at all. So, anytime there is even a weather issues, I'm very concerned. I have to move my son to my bedroom. And also, the tree, main root, it's growing laterally and also block half of my driveway. And my son right now is 14 years old and he's gonna be driving soon. And Higgins Street is a very narrow street. And the house in front of my house, they don't have the driveway, so they park on the street. And if you try to even enter, you know, you have to go over the tree roots. I don't think that is safe and also that's not good for the tree. And I talked to my neighbors and they know the tree better than I do. So, we all agree that the tree, if possible, to remove the tree and try to plant a healthy tree that could, you know, be there for a long time. And also, I'm not an expert, but I read from team's notes that the maple tree is a prohibited tree. And I think it cannot be even planted again in Massachusetts. And I think if we have something, a healthier, a younger tree, I think that will last for a long time. And the tree that is there, it did not look safe to me at all. So, I'm very concerned. I think that's the main reason I'm here. And Diane and her husband is here and also Nyberg, they can say more about it if you allow.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cohn. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Dr. Cohn on this matter?
Not yet.
Not yet. Thank you, Dr. Cohn. Before I ask for anybody, anyone else who would wish to testify on this, I wonder if we could ask Mr. Laqueeve to just give an overview of your professional assessment of the health of the tree.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to the Board for putting this on your agenda this evening. Thank you. My name is Tim Laqueeve. I'm the Arlington Town Tree Warden. And Mr. Cohn did reach out to me, contacted my office, concerned about a Norway maple tree planted in front of 8 Higgins Street. He was concerned with the safety of his family and also the overall health of the tree. So, when I went out to visit the tree, yes, it is a Norway maple and it is on the invasive species list. But again, these trees are still protected under Massachusetts general laws under Chapter 87. When I looked at the tree, it is still, in my opinion, not a danger or a safety concern. The reason being, there aren't any large cracks in the main stem. On the major leads, there aren't any cracks, holes, large cavities. There aren't any fruiting structures such as mushrooms, fruiting conks, even fruiting structures around the root system that would be an indication of any root rot. So, these indications to me, that's why I place this on the pruning list. This house is newly constructed and the contractors did build the home right up to the canopy. So, my feeling is that it's safe and the tree can be pruned. In my opinion, we don't have to do an all removal or completely nothing and ignore it. We can place it on the pruning list, remove that dead piece that Mr. Cohn did mention earlier, that there is a piece of dead wood in the first branch union that can be removed and also prune back the canopy from the home. Remove the dead wood, make it safe, and also help the vigor and health of the tree long term. So, with all these aspects put together, that's why my feeling is to put it on the pruning list. And again, we could actually reassess the tree in the springtime, see how the tree leaves out, and we could also make another assessment. But I stand for the tree and to place it on the pruning list.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laqueeve, and my colleague, Ms. Rowe.
Tim, did you look at the roots that he's talking about in the driveway?
I did. So, the contractor that built the home did build the driveway close to the root flare. As the root flare comes down, like Mr. Cohn did specify that the roots are laterally as most trees in that tree belt are.
Especially in Norway maples.
Exactly. You know, we all know that they're a surface rooted tree. And they did cut the driveway in close to the root flare. So, when you back out of the driveway, there is a little bit of wiggling and maneuvering around that root system. But again, my feeling is, when I inspected the tree, I didn't see any fruiting structures. If I saw mushrooms growing up around the base of the tree, that would give me an indication that there's root rot and then perhaps we could put that on the removal list. But again, there was no indication of any hazard of the tree. It is close to the canopy. The canopy is close to the upper portion of the building. And again, my feeling is prune that portion away from the home, just to give it some roof clearance and just, you know, have Mr. Cohn and his family feel safe in the home.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laqueeve. Anyone else have any other questions, Mr. Laqueeve? Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this matter?
I've got a question.
Come to the mic, please. If you could, through me, please. Yeah, thank you. And if you could give your name and address to the mic, yeah.
My name's Norman Magnuson. I live at number 12 Higgins Street.
Thank you.
I lived there for almost 30 years. I just, one question for Tim. Are you certified in risk assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious on that. Because I would, otherwise, I would like to get a professional risk assessment done on it. I just happen to work at a college campus in Cambridge where I manage a 3,500 tree urban forest, so I do have a little bit of knowledge. And the tree about, I think in two years ago, it, as Mr. Cohn said, it has four, three main branches. It used to have four. The fourth one or the first one came down on our house and our wires, tore our gutter down, pulled out all the wires and knocked the utility pole that was there over to the point where they had to add the second utility pole to hold it up. Someday, maybe they'll put a regular pole back in. And I feel that the tree is not only a hazard to Dr. Cohn's house, but it's a human hazard. You have a lot of children walking from Edison home through that way and back to school. And I feel that any kind of weight on those branches at some point, I mean, I've seen healthy branches come down with water weight or with snow weight. And I just think that's too much of a chance to take where we could take that tree down and taking, you know, look for an appropriate tree street, yeah, tree, street tree species to put back in there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak yet, please?
Hi, I'm Diane Magnuson and I live at 12 Higgins Street. I've actually lived there for my entire life, so, over 60 years. And I can tell you, as a child, I played in that tree. And you mentioned the canopy. In the summertime, that tree is sparse of leaves. And I've made numerous comments of how it's not a healthy tree because it doesn't have enough leaf to support the growth. So, also, the root system is doing an upheaval of the sidewalk. So, that also adds a danger to walking, pedestrian walking and clearing because it's starting to buckle up that sidewalk there, too. So, I think, I am very much with Dr. Cohn to have that tree taken down. As my husband said three years ago, that the one branch came down in a storm and pulled everything off our house. So, I don't, would not trust that the limb that's against Dr. Cohn's house or the other limb that overhangs Higgins Street wouldn't do the same thing in a, in a heavy wet snow or something like that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Yes, sir.
I plan to speak tonight. I'm not really dressed very well.
No worries.
I'm Steve Moore. I live at 64 Piedmont Street and I'm actually on the Tree Committee. Two questions, three questions for you, Tim. Do trees bear some inherent risk always?
Mr. Laqueeve, if you could accept the mic, Mr. Laqueeve.
Yes. Shade trees, one of the things that they provide, obviously, shade for us, but they also do shed branches and limbs do come off of trees occasionally.
Thank you.
To answer your question.
Thank you. I know that we have significant storms now and again and trees, even healthy trees, drop branches. I'm very sorry to hear that it caused significant damage to your house. But, but I know that part of the risk of having a tree is they can come down at inappropriate times. One second question is, the curb cut for the driveway, did that damage the tree roots that are spreading laterally?
Mr. Laqueeve?
That is difficult for me to say. The home and the driveway was built before our tree new bylaw is in effect and also that it's a public shade tree. It's hard to say exactly what type of excavation had been done to the root system. But as far as when I had an assessment, when Mr. Cohn first reached out to me, I didn't see anything that was catastrophic as far as any major structural anchor roots that had been severed. So, it's difficult for me to answer that, yes or no, but when I looked at it, I didn't see anything that struck me as, as a hazard.
Okay. And one last question, since this is before...
Through me, sir.
Yeah. Since this is before the tree bylaw was passed, are there any strictures now on contractors building right up to the tree canopy like that?
Mr. Laqueeve?
They are allowed, contractors are allowed to build up to the tree canopy, but it would be nice for them, as they submit their tree plan, to let us know on strictly tree removal, not actually building up to the canopy. There's nothing in our bylaws that says you cannot build this structure this close to the actual canopy of the tree. Our tree bylaw stately states whether it's a newly constructed home, a tear down, anything that's a, tendencies in larger, those trees are protected. And they are allowed to remove those, but they have to submit their plan, whether they want to replant or pay to the Trees Please Fund. But they're, to answer your question, there's no law or rule saying they cannot construct something close to the canopy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Mr. Nyberg.
Jonathan Nyberg and I own the property at 17 Robbins Road, so I'm the neighbor next door. It's a corner lot. I think, I love trees and actually have been working with helping us keep and restore them. My concern is the time and money and energy that we would spend on a compromised tree, I really feel would be better off spent on two healthy trees. So, that's my concern, is this has already been, from my perspective, compromised quite a bit by the center leader is gone. So, it's not like it was a side leader. It's the center of three leaders is gone. So, it's potentially open to water, et cetera. So, that's just, I think, I think we're all here to be proactive, to be tree huggers in a sense, but we want safe trees and also try to be proactive because I feel like the money we would spend on a compromised tree if and when it does go down, because we all have, you know, life expectancies far outweighs what we could be doing proactively for the trees in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nyberg. Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Laqueeve.
Could I ask Dr. Cohn a question?
Sure.
What I'm curious about is, in your letter, you are so concerned about your son that he doesn't sleep in his bed. What is your concern? That a branch will come through a window or is he near electrical wires or?
Yes, all of both because the tree branch comes next to his window. And, and also, the tree is holding kind of electrical wire. I don't know if the picture is here.
Sure, yes.
So, that's my main concern is not like, yeah, I want the tree to be beautiful and so forth, but the safety and to see this tree, like one branch in the middle is broken, if you see the tree, you know, this is not really a very healthy tree like everybody used to. I'm not an expert, but I'm very concerned about that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mahon?
I'd like to make a motion, and if anyone has followed these recent tree hearings, I usually come down on the side of taking the compromise and pruning and, as well as I've gone, as all my colleagues have, and visited each site, whether it's Webb Coward or somewhere else. I had to take a long trek on this one because I live on Howard Street, one street over from you all. And I'm very familiar with, you know, the, the structure that went up, the tree that's there that kind of has a life of its own and it is missing, as Mr. Nyberg said, the center trunk part of it, as well as in our particular neighborhood, and I don't know if it's global warming or climate change or anything like that, but my husband and I split a tree one third, two third with a neighbor's property. And it was healthy, but it was 40, 50, literally, feet long. They brought a crane in to take it out because trees in our neighborhood, and it may not be unique to our neighborhood, but, you know, I've lived there close to 30 years now. In the past three, four years, for some reason, we're just maybe other parts of Arlington in some sort of wind gully, you know, and have had the same thing. So, what I'd like to do is kind of barring away from what I normally do, with all the circumstances and being familiar with it, as my colleagues make a motion, to approve the second part of the Tree Warden's letter, that we will vote to remove the tree, the money to trees please, so everything contained in that last paragraph.
I'll second that motion. That's a motion I was gonna make. And I, if you don't mind, Joe.
Please.
I don't like the first new step I take to countermand the tree warden, but I am a tree expert and have been for 40 years. Arlington has so many Norway maples because we had a Norway maple nursery in the base of Sims Hospital. And they are an invasive tree. And I just, like Mr. Nyberg said, I think we shouldn't be spending good money on a bad tree. And why not spend money on an oak or another kind of maple and have a tree that the neighbors can look at and not worry about? I do appreciate the other neighbors that are worried that they are gonna lose a tree and that makes sense to me. I moved into a, a neighborhood in East Arlington and had to take down a tree right away. And it just, it was like a loss for a lot of my neighbors. Five years later, my new oak tree is, is enormous and it's, it's already taken the place of it. And so, I think it's a temporary hardship for the people that really care about the tree, but I think it would give a piece, a sense of peace of mind to the neighbors that are worried about it. And I completely think this is the right way to go. Diane, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahon.
Do I have further, further comments or questions? Okay. Yeah, Mr. Greeley.
Well, just, I, I really hate disagreeing with our Tree Warden, the Tree Committee. But, you know, the perception of fear for a child, whether it's possible or not, whether it's rare, whatever it is, that the child then doesn't, can't sleep in the bedroom over it, I'm gonna support the motion. I know nothing about trees, but I've become educated because of Tim.
Anything?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, everyone, for being late. I'm actually gonna abstain, having not heard the original presentation.
Okay. Excellent. I think I'm going to go along with my colleagues, but with deepest gratitude to Mr. Laqueeve for always making excellent presentation to us. I think on balance, in this case where the tree is compromised already, I can see the wisdom and the arguments that have been made by my, my colleagues. But thank you again for always, and always putting customer service first also. It's always very clear at these hearings that you've spent the time working with all of the proponents here, so. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor of Ms. Mahon's motion, seconded by Ms. Rowe?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn. Okay. It is 4-0-1. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Laqueeve. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and testifying.
Sorry, Tim. This is the first time for me. You know me.
We'll see next time.
Okay.
You're still batting about 98 percent.
Yeah.
We now, now move on to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the meetings, December 18th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion to approve by Ms. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Any further comments?
Abstain.
You'll abstain. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. It is 4-0-1. Thank you very much. We now move on to appointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Jonathan Gates, term to expire, 1/31/2019. Mr. Gates, are you here? Oh, here. Hi.
How are you, Jonathan Gates?
Hi. Nice to see you. Why don't you, tell us why you want to be a library trustee?
To give back to my community. The community, I, I came here for a year or two, 22 years ago. I have twin daughters that just graduated from Arlington High last year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I also have a first and second grader in bracket because why leave Arlington? But, you know, having the, the older and the younger kids, I have seen the excitement that they have in the library. And to me, giving back to the community, the biggest community place we have is our library. And so, we're at a time where there's opportunity with the library and reimagining the library to really make a difference for not, not just kids and teens, but the community at large, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you for, for offering yourself and your time for your service. I mean, my colleagues, have any questions or comments for Mr. Gates? Oh, I...
Ms. Greeley?
Move approval. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Mr. Greeley moves approval.
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Mahon.
Just a brief comment. All our thanks, of course, for volunteering for this position and I agree with everything you said. I always say, when I fade off back into my old sunset glory days, whether my own doing or the voters, one of the ways I'd like to give back to the community is through the Robbins Library. Every time I see these trustee appointments come up, I kind of go, ooh, I'd like to do that. Because one of my first jobs growing up in Arlington was, was a page at the library and just had such a great love for books. And we had a director then, Jim Fish, who, he was known as the man who came out to throw out all the books and I kept restamping them so they'd stay. So, but times have changed now, but I do agree in terms of it is a very important asset. Thank you for doing this and I'm glad to second Mr. Greeley's motion.
Yes. And I would just note that the library, as you, I'm sure, know, is no longer just about books and borrowing books. It's a place of community gathering and they're really taking a leadership role in our cultural district initiatives and our other cultural initiatives and positioning themselves that way. So, we hope that you'll be able to contribute in that way, too. So, on a motion by Mr. Greeley, seconded by Ms. Mahon, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We now move on to a presentation, Community Food Scrap Drop-Off Pilot Program. Charlotte Milan, Recycling Coordinator. Welcome, Charlotte.
Hi.
Hi, Charlotte.
Charlotte Milan, Recycling Coordinator. Pull this down, like that. So, I'm pleased to be here in front of you to announce that this food scrap program will be starting. And we have the support of the Health Department and we went to the Park and Rec Commission. There seems to be, there was an interest in making sure the neighbors were gonna be made aware of what was going on. We've got great locations picked out. We're reaching out to neighbors. We have an invitation that I've left here with Ms. Karpelka for you to look at if you want to. You're welcome to come. Three opportunities in the neighborhoods that the food scrap drop-off program would be starting in and public is invited, but generally, we're starting by inviting the neighbors geographically who would probably most be interested right away. And it's the kind of thing we have to, as a pilot program, experiment with what the demand is out there and work it out from there. We have good information from the Vision 2020 surveys that people are composting in Arlington in their backyards. They're do, participating in subscription food scrap pickup services. There are now four such subscription services operating in the town of Arlington. And, and that there's interest in one of the neighborhoods that has helped initiate this project from the neighbors and participating locally with the drop-off program. So, I'm here to answer any questions, but also just to invite you to the receptions.
Excellent. Thank you. We have any questions by my colleagues? Mr. Dunn?
How many locations are there?
We're hoping for three to start.
Okay. And what are they? This is partly for the people who haven't read what's in the packet.
Sure. So, one is the Public Works, where we've been doing a very small scale version of this for over a year now. Another is near the skating rink, another easy place to access, also if someone's biking, it's good access from the bike path. And a third location is in the Waldo Park neighborhood. That is the neighborhood initiated, of interest in area. So, we'll, we'll see if those three work out. These units are movable, so if it's not working at one neighborhood, we can move it. If we want to add three more next year, we can do that, too.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah, I noticed, I noticed that they're bear safe and raccoon safe and odor resistant and is that?
Yep. Move approval?
A motion by Ms. Mahon, seconded by Ms. Rowe. Any further discussion? Hearing none on a motion by Ms. Mahon, seconded by Ms. Rowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
I guess it's received. It was a motion to receive, I assume. Yeah, thank you, Charlotte.
And I'm also approving.
And she approves.
The three sites that she's posed to us, so she needs our approval.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Charlotte. Good luck. Excellent. Thank you very much, Charlotte. Good luck. Okay. We now have a request for approval, letter of non-opposition for medical marijuana dispensary at seven eighty-nine Massachusetts Avenue, the Massachusetts Patient Foundation.
Do we have the letter?
We do not have any materials whatsoever in our packet, so I wanted to just set a little bit of context, have the town council fill in anything, just so we know where we're at now, and then we'll turn it to you. So, as we all know, this board had some long discussions with the Massachusetts Patient Foundation regarding a location on Water Street. We did issue a letter of non-opposition and then entered into a community host agreement on a medical facility. My understanding is you're coming before us for a second, a second location. Right now, just so that those who are watching are clear on the state.
You can go out there.
Yeah. Just so those who are watching are clear on the state of where we are right now, is that facility is, I think that's pending with DPH right now, that application, if I'm not mistaken. We also, this is not to be confused with recreational marijuana, which was also approved by the voters two years ago. Arlington is currently under moratorium through the end of June on that, as far as any, deciding of any new recreational facilities, and Mr. Dunn is representing the board on a working group that the town managers pulled together to look at policies around that. I just, I note this because there can be some confusion between, between the two. Am I correct in this, Mr. Heim, just if you could just fill in any blanks, and then we'll...
Sure. Mr. Kuro, ladies and gentlemen of the board, just to provide a little bit more history and context for those folks who may not be familiar, a little over two years ago, the Massachusetts Patient Foundation approached the board for a, with a request for a letter of non-opposition with respect to a location for a registered marijuana dispensary on, I'm sorry, it's Mill Street?
Water Street.
Water Street.
Water Street. On Water Street, which is a medical office building, the board eventually executed a community host agreement and did approve a letter of non-opposition that was required, but not sufficient for the opening of a registered marijuana dispensary. These folks still had to go through the Board of Health and their regulatory process, as well as the Arlington Redevelopment Board with respect to any special permits that were required for the site. Since that time, a lot of things have happened relative to both medical marijuana and recreational marijuana in the state. My understanding of what these folks are here to do tonight is to propose an alternate location. It's not my understanding that they are hoping to have two locations in Arlington, but they are proposing an alternate location. I'll leave it to them to set forth their reasons why, and they're seeking non-opposition for that alternate location with the understanding that if at some point they went through this whole process and they were approved, that they would not open at the Water Street location, but would instead open at this new proposed location. The board is certainly permitted, in my opinion, to engage in that kind of parallel process, though it's not obligated to. The few other things that I would note is that, again, the board is really, has a limited role here. It's whether or not it's going to submit a letter of non-opposition or a letter of approval, but to DPH to allow this facility. If you don't like the location, you shouldn't issue a letter of non-opposition, but there are significant additional steps that would have to take place after this. I will say that it's also worth noting that the regulatory picture is increasingly complex. As the board may recall, DPH's regulations and decisions have not made life easy in Arlington with respect to the buffer zone and a couple other things that have been complicated over the last couple of years. The Cannabis Control Commission's draft regulations, which are not yet in force, do provide a process for conversion of a medical facility into a recreational facility, which this board needs to be aware of as being contemplated now. And there are some questions within that process that are unanswered. It's not clear to me whether or not the buffer zone for recreational marijuana is the same or different than for medical marijuana. It's not clear what the scope of permissible municipal regulations are for recreational marijuana. And then finally, I think as everyone has seen, and I'm sure these folks are well aware, there's been a fair amount of, I don't know whether you want to call it posturing or not, by the federal government recently, that, you know, there's nothing that any of us can do about that, but it's certainly complicated the landscape. So, I note that also that the Police Department, Health and Human Services, and Planning Department have not weighed in on this yet, and I do recommend that you get their input, but with that said, I'll obviously leave it to the chairman, unless you have any questions for me.
Yeah, Ms. Rowe.
I have a question. This is right across from a historic site. It's on the National Register, and it's also in a historic district. Will those entities have any, would the Massachusetts Historical Commission and our Historic District Commission have any say on this use?
Well, my understanding of what's there now, the, I think the big...
I understand what it looks like.
I don't think that the actual use is necessarily something that would come before the Historic District Commission. There could be certain aspects of the facade and the appearance that might require Historic District Commission review, but the actual use itself would...
Could you check on that, though?
I could certainly check on it.
Yeah, 'cause I just think that more and more this, when the legislation is finally out on the street, you know, we're trying to bring tourists to the most important historic resource we have in Arlington, which is right across the street from this site, and I'm not sure how conducive that's gonna be for tourist buses when they park in front of a medical marijuana facility.
Well, Ms. Rowe, what I would say is that that certainly germinated your consideration. I'll be happy to look into it further, but I'm, again, usually the Historic District Commission's purview is to the sort of physical appearance of, from the street view within the district.
One last question for attorney Heim. I just wanted to clarify, and I think you already answered this, that my memory, and I'm separating medical marijuana facility from recreational, this is medical, when we did submit the letter of non-opposition or approval or whatever, I think what I heard you say, which is what I was gonna ask, is, is my memory correct, when we did that, we had heard from, especially Planning Department and Redevelopment Board, and the police chief, I can't remember, and I think I heard you say that that's the process we followed last time.
It would be my recommendation that you get those folks...
That's, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Sorry.
Mine was almost the same question. Am I right, we waited to hear from the Board of Health before we actually gave this approval last time?
I'm sorry, Mr. Greeley. I don't recall whether or not they had weighed in or not. I think that they did, but I'll admit that I don't recall that.
Yeah, I think he can answer.
Certainly.
Yeah, sorry, if you could identify.
Whenever you're ready. No, I asked him. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Why don't I turn, why don't I turn to you, if you could identify each of your stuff, 'cause we, just bearing in mind, we have no letter or nothing in our packet here, so.
I understand.
This background information from council is all that we have right now, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kuro. Valerio Romano, I'm the attorney for the Massachusetts Patient Foundation, here with Joseph Lacash, who's one of the founders of the foundation. I've been back and forth to Arlington, I don't know, innumerable times over the last few years, attempting to cite here, and sort of prefatory-wise, we always made a pledge that if we had an alternative location, that we would bring it before the board. That was one of the things that we had told some of the, some of the concerned parties, because we're currently in the same building as a pediatrician's office, which frankly, I think is completely appropriate. It's medical, it's medical use. With that being said, we had some concern, and so, we always said if we found something else that we thought would work. So, we're here to uphold that promise and that commitment to the board, first off. I believe last time, what we heard from the Board of Health was that they have jurisdiction over this, as per your bylaw, and since being awarded the letter, we actually had multiple meetings with the Arlington Board of Health, and they actually issued a permit approving of our use. So, they didn't, they didn't say we disapprove or approve to you. They sort of left you with this prefatory, like this early, allow them to continue down the application process, and then we'll see if it passes our requirements. And in fact, your Board of Health had one of the most thoughtful things that I've heard. I do this, so my office, Vicente Sederberg, this is all we do. So, we represent about a third of the hundred and twenty or so registrations in the Commonwealth. We represent others, and we have an office in Los Angeles. We represent hundreds in Denver. We're opening an office in Florida, with Maryland, Ohio, and this is all we do. And your Board of Health, actually, one of the things they said, which was just incredibly insightful and thoughtful, is one of the things that a patient walks in and wants to talk to somebody about their medical treatment, and you have just sort of somebody without any necessary medical training, kind of going back and forth with that patient about their medical treatment. Your Board of Health said, well, no, I want a trained healthcare professional to be making, having that discussion, and we, of course, agreed to that, to hiring, you know, a registered nurse or even a doctor to have that discussion. So, your Board, and I'd never heard that anywhere, and this is all we've been doing in Massachusetts for years, and we've done it elsewhere. So, your Board of Health was really on top of it, and they, we went back and forth a whole bunch of times. So, you know, quickly, what we're asking for, we're not asking for your approval in the sense that even if you were to vote for a letter of support or non-opposition, and last time it was a four oh vote, even if you were to vote for a letter of support or non-opposition, we don't get to move forward and open. We still gotta go get special permit from the ARB, so we gotta convince them about parking and traffic and access and all the other concerns that you would have citing with the ARB, and then we'd have to go to the Board of Health, and they have oversight, you know, of health and safety for Arlington, so we'd have to satisfy them for the concerns as well. So, it's not like an affirmative vote tonight would actually get us there. We'd still, when you go to the ARB, as I'm sure you're aware, and I know Mr. Heim is aware, they ask all of the city, or the town departments to weigh in. So, at that point, police, fire, Health Department, they all give input as to our package and our application to the ARB, and so, there is a, there is sort of a time. This just says, hey, go ahead and see if this property works for the rest of the town, and that's kind of what we're asking, 'cause we do not want to, by being here tonight, our goal is not to scuttle our plans on Water Street, 'cause it could be that the ARB says, no, you know, you don't have enough parking there on Mass Ave, or no, or the Health Department says, no, you haven't convinced us that this is gonna be as safe as the Water Street location. And so, we don't want to scuttle that plan, because we've, we're very far along. The Massachusetts Patient Foundation, on Wednesday, is hopefully having a final inspection at their cultivation facility in Fitchburg. The DPH will be there. We're very far along in this process, and so, we're not trying to give up what we have, but, you know, frankly, this is a more attractive location for the foundation, right? It's on Mass Ave as opposed to, you know, up inside of Water Street, and we didn't have any hearings for the, for the Mass Ave, for the Water Street location, where there weren't people in the audience sort of incensed that we were even proposing it. I don't see anybody here tonight who's coming out in opposition, so that sort of speaks something to me as well, as to whether it's appropriate for the board to at least say, hey, go ahead and keep applying, and then the ARB, they may have people show up, Board of Health, they may have people show up, but, you know, that's sort of anyway, way I kind of, you know, look at, look at the option here. Just a few more things. So, yeah, as far as the Historic Commission and the historic nature of that location, this is, I mean, you, we'll work with, you know, the ARB and anybody to make sure our facade is one that matches the, you know, the culture and what's going on in the location. No one really knows what's going on in there. This is not a Denver pot shop that's gonna scare off people from going into your historic location. This is absolutely about medical cannabis only. In order for us, even if we were to try to convert or switch or include adult use, we'd have to execute a host community agreement, and that's actually straight up in the law that the governor signed, and that would have to be approved by the selectmen, and if we don't get that host community agreement executed for adult use, we can't move forward. We believe that host community agreement is gonna sort of supplant the letter of support requirement as, for adult use. We'd have to then go back to the ARB for a change of use. We'd have to go back to the Board of Health, because our use would have, would have been amended. So, it's not like we have some, like, automatic conversion by doing this. This is not opening of, you know, what we sort of picture in Oakland or Venice Beach, California, all places where I've lived, or Denver. This is actually just a medical facility for just the patients of the Commonwealth to come that are certified with cards to come and get cannabis, medicine, medical treatment. So, I, you know, we're citing one on, and I know it's not historic, but on Harvard Ave, another one of my clients in Austin-Brighton, and we had competition that was closer to all the downtown businesses than ours was, and all the downtown businesses actually came into the City Council in Boston and said, we want the closer one, because it brings people into town. It brings people with discretionary income into town. It brings more business to your local businesses, and every single one of them, almost two or one, said, hey, we want the one that's closer. And so, and that's because this is, this is actually not that pot shop, but instead a medical, a medical opportunity and people that come in with discretionary income. So, I'm not sure if it's the sort of the concern that's gonna scare people off by citing this, like it would like a recreational or an adult-use dispensary. I could absolutely see that as more of a, more of a concern affecting your historic location there. So, I thought I'd mention that. Yeah, and so, you know, I mean, another sort of feeling for us, you know, look, we're moving forward with our property, with our Water Street property, if we can't get approval of the board here. Our relationship with the landlord there isn't perfect, and, you know, I don't want to get in any, like, real sort of further business detail about it, but it's, it's another reason why it's attractive to us to be in front of the board and try to move our location. It just, it just sort of makes good business sense for us, but we have, we have an enforceable agreement on that location, and we're moving forward, and, you know, if the board says, hey, stay where you are, then that's what we're gonna do. But, like I said, we're just asking the board to say, hey, keep trying to, keep applying, right? It's not like we're getting, we get to open and just submit it, you know, just change our location, and that's the end of that. It's just, hey, keep applying. So, I thought that was worth bringing to you. And then, so, you know, we, like I said, we'd start over with the ARB and the Board of Health, or if we stay at Water Street, we're ready to actually pull a demo and then construction permits, 'cause we've been awarded those permits by the ARB and Board of Health. So, in a sense, this slows us down a little bit in Arlington, but we're on a parallel track with having, absolutely completing our cultivation facility in Fitchburg, and then takes a few months to grow, so it really wouldn't slow us down, you know, that incredibly much. Finally, you know, there's, one of the perceived real important issues, particularly from selectmen and elected officials and those that work for them and with them, is security. That's frequently, you know, with one of these facilities, although there hasn't been any security things that have happened anywhere in the Commonwealth so far with the seventeen-plus that are open today. That's one of the things that everybody thinks about, is security. There's more eyeballs on this location than there are around the corner on Water Street. That's a, and so, if that becomes a calculus for y'all, this is, this is a more secure location. I mean, there's, it's, it's a, it's a single-use building right on Mass Ave, and so, ultimately, it's more secure. So, my request for the board is simply to issue a letter of support or non-opposition, so that we can move forward with the local application process and see if the ARB and the Board of Health will approve this location, and that's really, that's really all it is. So, with that, if there's any questions I can answer, all I think about is cannabis, so it is sort of, you know, a hot issue these days, so if, you know...
I like your tie.
Oh, thank you very much. Well, I think about fishing, too, actually.
Oh.
Vineyard vines, but probably a little too much fishing also, but if there's anything I can answer for the board about, you know, about medical or even adult use, just because it's sort of, it's sort of related, although that's not what we're here for, and like I said, we can't switch to it, I'd be happy to do that. And Joseph, of course, is here to talk about the foundation as well, if there's anything you, any further questions you have. Basically, we've been through the wringer in Arlington. I think most people in this town know who we are, and we've met with pretty darn good approval, except for a few people who are...
Yeah, I'm new.
I'm sorry?
I'm new.
Yes. So, that means we get to answer some questions, I hope, for you.
I'd be ready to make a motion, but I don't know if my colleagues have questions.
Are my questions, colleagues have questions for?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a few questions, if I may. So, am I to understand, you have not talked about this location with the Board of Health, with Redevelopment or any other board? This is stop one.
And through, through the chair, of course. Mr. Greeley, that's correct. This is stop one, because we're, we don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars on doing an ARB special permit application if we don't know from the board here that, hey, go ahead and keep applying. And so, that's, this is sort of the first step in that whole application process.
Have you bought the building, or is it your goal to buy the building?
Yeah, we currently have the building under option. Actually, the option, it took a little longer to get on the agenda because of the holidays and the storm, but the option expires in about six days, so.
And on that issue, Mr. Greeley, this actually makes the Massachusetts Patient Foundation sort of a property owner, as opposed to just a renter in Arlington, and that kind of like bolsters our community involvement in the sense that that's really what we would be if, if we were allowed to move to this location.
Well, I kind of liked Water Street because it wasn't a storefront, to be honest, and I like the security concept of it more than this one is hitting me at this point. I also feel it's a little premature. I feel this board... I feel this board should have a policy that no one can own two of these licenses in Arlington. Or do we even want a second license in Arlington? Trust you completely, you're just talking, I know, you're just talking about the one license and moving to this location, I understand, but we've already gone through the, you know, so, um, I, I, I'm sorry about the six-day option you're facing. Uh, I, I wouldn't be ready to support this at this point.
Um, if that was an emotion, I'll make a motion. I was gonna make a motion of no action at this time, and that's, that was your motion, and I'll second it.
Okay, well, I, I was gonna say table, but I'll do, you know, I wanna give him a chance, but I'm not, not tonight.
Okay, which would you prefer, the table? Well, why don't we hear from everybody else? And, and I just wanted to say that, um, the reason I feel there are not a lot of people here tonight is we've established a process, um, and everyone is very well-versed with that, and we're basically the last stop, not the first. And traditionally in the past, on every issue, whether it's before, um, the, the, uh, school committee, or I'm blanking down at the rink, or, uh.
I can recommend.
I can recommend that when we're the last step in a, in a process, we don't deviate from that. As well as when we made this decision before, as my colleagues have stated, and Attorney Heim, we have her from Planet Redevelopment Board, Board of Health, Arlington Police Department, so I'm afraid that if we stray from that well-known process that we've established, that we're the end, number one, people are gonna say, "How come the selectmen did this?" And the reason we weren't there in the seats tonight is because you did it back end, reverse. And, um, second of all, not that you would do that, but having the last group that has a very small piece to approve of it, which is basically the end of the process, us already doing that, I wouldn't want to be disrespectful to my colleagues on any of those, um, boards, commissions, as well as, um, the town manager and the police department. So, um, I'd like to hear from my colleagues if it's a table, if it's a no action, or something else.
Mr. Kuro, may I, may I chime in, uh, just very briefly on that?
Briefly, yeah.
So first of all, uh, Mr. Greeley, we could absolutely, and then, look, I, I'm getting it, and I wouldn't expect actually the Board to necessarily go against Mr. Heim's suggestion that we table this for a while and get some more info. As soon as he made that recommendation, I was like, "Joseph, we're not getting our vote tonight, because that's why we have Mr. Heim here, is to help us negotiate this." So I get it. Uh, but we can also, we can amend the letter with language that says, "This is only for one" or something, you're not gonna be able to cite two, and we can come on Mr. Heim and Mr. Chapdolane, we, we could put together language that would satisfy that concern, uh, so that you know that we're not actually getting a second license, the letter wouldn't apply to that. Uh, and then, um, as far as the last or first stop, the last time, actually, the letter of support came first, before we went to the ARB or the Board of Health. It went, "Letter of non-opposition, the four-oh vote," and then we went to the ARB and got the special permit, and then we went to the Board of Health. And each one of those other hearings were multiple in nature. So this actually, the, it was the Board of Selectmen who issued a four-oh vote before we went to either of those other boards.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you on that. Our memories are gonna disagree.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna tell you, it appeared before the Board, we had a full Board the first time, and I was there that night. Um, we asked for more information, to hear back from, um, through the town manager, from other boards and commissions. It came up six weeks later, and the reason it was four-oh is because I couldn't make that meeting that night. So when it first came to us, we tabled it, asked for more information. It came back six weeks later, um, I was sitting at home watching it, and I was sick, and that's why it's a four-oh vote, if you look it up.
Oh, absolutely, I remember that you weren't here.
I'm gonna say our memories differ, so I'm, I'm sorry.
As you know, I'm new to this.
Yes.
Topic. My office is right down the street from an existing, um, medical marijuana shop, so.
Brookline?
Downtown Boston.
Downtown Boston.
Um, and I don't like this, um, location. Um, I have been here along with Mr. Greeley, allowing liquor into a blue town that happened gradually, and I just, um, I think the Water Street location's better. I understand from a business point of view that it isn't for you all, and I hear what you're saying, and we do want to, um, try to get good entrepreneurs into town, but I just, I have trouble with this storefront, and I, I'm, I'm just wary. I'm very surprised the neighborhood isn't here. I used to live in the neighborhood, and we, um, there was a Hodgson's and Oates Car Dealership that, um, and a super stop and shop that were essentially both, um, um, they were harassed for years, so, um, maybe they're all home smoking dope, I don't know.
Not from, not from our location.
I think they're at the, I think they're at the other meeting.
You are not.
Medically, of course.
No, it doesn't have to be. If they grew it, it's legal.
It's, they, you know, anyway, I have a, I have a harder time with this for the same reasons Mr. Greeley did, and I'm new to it, so I'm, I'm taking baby steps. But I'm, I think your presentation has been very good, it's been very interesting for me to hear as a business owner to a business owner what you're trying to do. And I'm just, I, I feel too green to, to vote anything but what Mrs. Mohan has suggested.
I understand.
Mr. Dunn.
Uh, do we actually have a motion on the floor yet?
Do not have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Sort of motion.
Yeah, we have a sort of motion, which isn't a motion. So I am, in general, uh, definitely think that, like, I'm comfortable in general with Arlington leaning forward on marijuana, both recreational and medical. With that said, there's no world where I would be supporting, making a motion tonight without additional input from our town professionals. Uh, and I guess in some ways, I'm kind of hoping that the police chief comes back and says, "You know, I really prefer this location," because I suspect some other of my colleagues would be swayed by, you know, his or other, you know, feedback. So towards that end, I would, my motion is, is that we refer, um, investigation to, to the town manager and town council, um, from other town departments and, and bring it back for a, a discussion, uh, later on.
So move to table, second.
Uh, move to, actually, move table with some, with some specific referrals.
Right, exactly, second.
And I see, and Mr. Chairman, I see Mr. Heim is raising his hand.
Okay, and yes, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to note that I think that actually everybody's memories are in actually decent harmony here. I think that Ms. Mohan is correct, that we did have the benefit of a lot of these folks weighing in. I don't know whether it was, uh, I don't recall the specific list, but I do recall that the selectmen wanted that initial input. I also want to say that Mr. Milano is correct, that, that the Board of Selectmen's, uh, non-opposition is the first procedural requisite thing in order to be able to go to the Board of Health and the ARB for the formal permit process. But I think that Ms. Mohan, in other words, recollections are correct, that there was more context for the selectmen, so I think what Mr. Dunn is proposing, uh, and what Ms. Mohan is proposing makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
So I. I'd oppose it too.
And Mr. Greeley. Always Mr. Greeley.
And only led by this great chair, no.
Yeah, great chairs, I shouldn't say anything. So, um, I, I will support the motion. I will say, however, that, that I, I really do oppose, um, this as, as a location. I have a different, different, um, angle on it. Partly, you know, one of the things this board has struggled with is the empty storefront situation in, in Arlington Center. I'm very worried that if, if we were to give a, any type of a green light to go forward on this, especially with the current legal climate and regulatory climate, and we all saw what happened with the U.S. Attorney today, right? That the, uh, the industry could be in such a swirl that we could end up having a situation where you're sitting on a property that is empty for who knows how long. And that, I don't think serves, serves the goals of, of this board in trying to revitalize Arlington Center at all. But I will support the motion as it's, as it's put forward and, and hear more from our, our professionals. But I'll tell you that I am inclined against this, this location. I think if this is an ostensible, um, medical use, a medical building, or a building that that houses other medical practices, is a better choice, uh, relatively speaking. So, thank you. Anything more from my colleagues? No? All right. Uh, on a motion by Mr. Dunn to table with a number of requests for referrals to other town officials, seconded by Ms. Mohan, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move on to, uh, discussion and approval of Autonomous Vehicle Testing Memorandum of Understanding.
Mr. Chair, may, um, may I humbly request that we go to the warrant article hearing since we're losing town council to the ARB at nine o'clock, just to ensure that we have his wise counsel?
Absolutely. So we move on to, um, Articles for Review, Warrant Article Hearings.
Excuse me.
And hearing no, no opposition, we're gonna skip. So firstly, we have Article Three, Bylaw Amendment, Residential Construction, Open Excavation and Demolition Activity Regulations, Neighbor Notifications, and Meetings.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to actually summarize, um, a few aspects of each of the three articles before you for this purposes of efficiency. And thank you to the Board for, uh, lending me to the redevelopment board and the planning director for a little while tonight. As you know, the zoning recodification proposal is before them, and it's an important matter and one of the principal matters before special town meeting. Uh, I want to note four modest modifications to the three articles before you before we discuss them individually, if that's permissible to the Chair.
Sure.
Um, first, um, the title of Article Three was put out there in error. It's actually a Open Excavation, Demolition Activity Regulations, Neighbor, I'm sorry, Noise Abatement, not Neighbor Notifications and Meeting. And that was corrected on the special town meeting warrant for publication, um, and it's been corrected in the, um, materials, uh, for you. The other modification I guess I would make to that is, I had some occasion to talk with, um, or, or have some correspondence with, with individual members of the Board, as well as, um, interested residents, uh, one of whom noted that, um, with respect to the proposed vote, it would be valuable in, uh, the added language to add, after Massachusetts' Public Utilities or their contractors. Um, so if, on page, I believe it's six, it would read, "The provisions of this section of Title Five, Article Twelve, Three A shall not apply to Arlington Department of Public Works, Massachusetts Public Utilities, or their contractors." Um, the second modification that I, uh, need to make is on Article Four, the Bylaw Amendment to Parking Benefits District Accenture. I'm sorry, there's simply a typo. Capital expenditures, B, um, Section B, Subpoint Three, should be in front of the Capital Planning Committee, not the Finance Committee. I apologize for that. Finally, a bit of good news, uh, with respect to Article Seven, the Grant of Use Restriction and Access Even Fifty-One Grove Street. Subsequent research, as I was preparing for this meeting, found a small note in, uh, what is an enormous file, uh, that takes up several drawers, um, that, uh, basically highlighted that there was a vote of a special town meeting in two thousand and one that accomplished what we're supposed to be doing here. And this is the risk that happens when all of the attorneys for the industrial parties, uh, the town, as well as the superintendent, the town manager, and everybody else has turned over in the, uh, uh, nearly twenty years since this matter first came before you. So I apologize for putting something, uh, before you that isn't necessary, uh, but luckily we found it, uh, just in time. So with that, substantively, Article Three is a clarification to what remains a somewhat ambiguous issue. Title, um, Five of the Town Bylaws addresses, uh, regulations on the use of private property. And when we passed revisions to our noise abatement provisions, um, we didn't contemplate that those revisions might start getting residents concerned about the noise impact of public works projects on the public and private ways. A further sort of scrutinizing of this particular title of, article of Title Five reveals that there's a couple confusing provisions in there that sort of probably arose over time, things like the town horn, I guess, could arguably affect private property, but is technically on public property. And so what this article is attempting to do is basically clarify that, look, um, construction activities in the public and private way, first of all, are not, um, stationary in nature. They tend to move along. It's not really what the residential construction bylaw was supposed to be oriented to, which is the impact that having, you know, a construction project next to your house that's going on for six months, I think we can all think of a couple of examples, how that, uh, our noise regulations were maybe not adequately serving and protecting residents. Uh, whereas with roadwork, it tends to be in one location for a little while and move along down the way. The second issue is that, um, according to industry standards, these, uh, roadway projects typically start earlier, um, uh, both by Public Utilities and Department of Public Works. And then finally, uh, the, uh, I don't know that we need to resolve all the ambiguity in, uh, Title Five with respect to the regulation, regulations on use of private property, but I would say that public ways in particular, and as well as private ways, because of the various things that we do to service private ways, are really under the purview of the Board of Selectmen to determine when we should be, um, regulating construction activities such as service of water mains or things like that, which folks regularly come before you to get grant of access, things like that.
Great, thank you very much. I'm gonna first ask for any board questions or comments on this, and then see. Are, are you here on a particular article, sir?
Uh, no, just kind of general.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just wondering if you were planning to speak to any articles, no?
No, no.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'll ask for any, any board questions or comments on this, at all?
I guess, just for the sake of clarification, uh, so is there, I know that, uh, for instance, when we're talking about overnight road construction, it requires a special order of the town manager. Is, uh, what are the hours outside, like, how, what is it that drives that, um, once we make this change? What is it, is there any constraint upon when the, the, this work can happen?
So I would say that there's, um, that this is exempting, um, them from the general hours of operation. Selectmen could certainly modify it to include certain hours of operation, uh, to extended hours of operation and be reflective of the way it was prior to, uh, the noise abatement changes. I believe previously it was.
Seven.
Seven to eight, uh, were the hours of operation. And there was another slight tweak made, uh, with respect to, um, uh, weekends and holidays. But, um, I guess what I would say, Mr. Dunn, is that this really, in my mind, shouldn't be applying to this type of work in the first place. And I would hope that this would, would, would clarify that. I know that the town manager's sort of provision speaks a little bit also to emergency service and things like that. But this would exempt them generally from those hours.
Let me tell you, let me, let me say this more directly. I'm worried that this change will make it such that N-Star can dig up a road at three in the morning, anytime, any, without any urgency, just because they can.
Okay.
Am I off-base?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
All right.
Maybe, if I may, potentially, I can't speak for Eversource, but more than likely off, off-base from a practical point of view, but from a regulatory point of view, it's a fair point.
Yeah. I guess I've always, um, one of the things that I've been comfortable with, with our noise bylaw, is that it says things like, "You shouldn't do this, and if you really need to, you can get permission." Like, like I, as a, as a general structure, I like that. And, uh, I guess, like, and so when we talk about the town digging up a road in the middle of the night, that is clearly because it came through the authority of the town manager one way or another. Public utilities, however, I would, don't have that constraint, and I'd like them to be under that constraint. I'm not trying to specify exactly what box to put them in, but I'm trying to say what I think, a, a broad concept.
Would, would they be under that constraint, if we put them under that constraint?
I think that we could modify the exemption relatively easily by saying, um, "Shall not apply to Arlington Department of Public Works, or Massachusetts Public Utilities, or their contractors with the permission of the town manager."
Outside of regular hours, because if they're doing it at two in the afternoon, I don't think we need special permission.
The only other thing I, I guess I would say is that typically, um, for non-emergency work, we do require them to make submittals to, um, engineering, um, depending on what's happening, the Board of Selectmen, for a grant of, uh, you know, access.
So you're saying we could move the enforcement mechanism of hours to that as one way of doing this?
I think they're kind of parallel things that exist right now. I, I have to say, I, I don't, it's hard for me to say, it's hard for me to go back and know what town meeting was contemplating when these different things were sort of evolving over time. over time. But I am uncomfortable generally with the idea that we have something that's oriented towards regulation of use of private property, that's really heavily regulating something that is vested before you. But I don't want to use this as an opportunity to go overboard. So I hear what you're saying, Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Chaplin, I think you had something. I did want to just make the point, that the whole, the real need for this was Mike Rata Macher bringing to my attention that water work and roadwork has historically always started at seven a.m. So you are right that we probably should think just a little bit more about how we don't, how we're not creating unintended consequences here, but the purpose here was to make sure that we could start and get, you know, summer, spring, summer, fall work done in an economical fashion by starting at seven a.m.
I am, I have absolutely, I'm fully supportive of that.
Anyone else, any questions?
So, why don't we just leave it public works? exclude utilities, period.
If I may, Mr. Grille, I don't think that would be sufficient for DPW's concerns because they have to work in concert with folks like the MWRA and other folks who are basically planning their work with DPW, in terms of, for example, when they, they do have a certain responsibility to restore the road condition, but I think that oftentimes what they're doing is they're planning road resurfacing along with water and gas main replacement. So I suppose what I would suggest is that we can add a qualification for public utilities that essentially says that, you know, and public utilities to the extent permitted outside of regular hours by the town manager. If the board's comfortable with that.
So what I'm hearing is, because we've got the change of neighbor to noise abatement, we've got the added language at the end of, I think, Title Five, Article Twelve, that you cited in the beginning, we now have this here. Is this something, I'm feeling like maybe this is something that, can we take this up at the next meeting? Do we have to vote something here tonight? Because I'd kind of like to see all that together, or is there a time constraint?
I think that, for Ms. Kropelka to
Has to be at the advocate on Thursday. And obviously have it out, Thursday's the last day.
If I can just clarify, that we're really only talking about one thing, the mislabeling of it with respect to the warrant. We're not, that was already corrected. We're not, that's, that's not a huge change. What we're really focused on here is, to the extent that we're talking about anybody other than the Department of Public Works, what, if any, qualification should we put on their exemption? And if the board wants to put a qualification on their exemption, I think I can pretty confidently say here and now that we would read something as follows. The provisions of this section of Title Five, Article Twelve, Three A shall not apply to the Arlington Department of Public Works, or the Massachusetts, or Massachusetts Public Utilities and their contractors, with, subject to the permission of the town manager outside of these hours, or the hours set forth in Section A.
And why would you not, and I'm not being sarcastic, because I agree with Mr. Grille's suggestion, why not just limit it to DPW? Because the work that has to be done in concert with other agencies that fall under the DPW umbrella, if you are the town manager. I mean, I'm so, I'm inclined to kind of lean that way. Sometimes short and sweet is better.
Well, it's in, well, it's in concert, but, I mean, gas work is gas work, electric work is electric work. It is them and their, they do coordinate with engineering, but it is their work. So I'm not sure how broad that interpretation can be.
I guess, yeah, there are two reasons for me. One is conceptually what we're talking about here is, are public ways and private ways really meant to be regulated by a bylaw that says regulations on use of private property? So that's one, one piece of it. But the second piece of it is, is it's my understanding that DPW wants to encompass these folks because they don't want to get into a situation where those folks can't start at seven, but DPW can. In other words, DPW can't resurface something that hasn't been fixed or maintained or whatever. And I will say that there is already exemption to emergency service, so we're not talking about something like that. And I think, Mr. Dunn, that, I would hope that, you know, our utilities would only be out at three o'clock in the morning due to emergency, but I hear what you're saying, who knows? And I appreciate that. So I think that, my understanding is that DPW wants to encompass more than just DPW's specific work.
Okay.
Ms. Rhodes, she has something?
Dan does.
I want to repeat something, so you went first.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's just important. I mean, I don't know exactly how to formulate it, but I think as long as it's under, somehow under the, the direction of the Department of Public Works, and so, I don't know the proper language. It didn't sound like we were quite there, I think, with this last read-through, but I think you get the gist of what we're after, that I think the goal here is that, that public works, or the town manager through public works, signs off on any work by the, by the utilities, and presumably they will, they will act with prudence in that case, and not allow them.
May I ask Ms. Kropelka for a clarification? So you mentioned, Marie, you mentioned needing to get to the advocate. That was the warrant or the votes and comments?
No, this, this warrant has to be at the advocate.
So the warrant has to be at the advocate. Our next meeting, the board's next meeting is on the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
So if we met on the twenty-second for final vote and comments?
That's okay, but this is
So we could bring back language for
I'd like to see this all written up.
Okay.
Absolutely. The warrant article is
So is that a motion to table by?
The one changed, the warrant article.
To be, I'm sorry, folks. Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, the warrant article has already been changed, but the warrant articles are all set the way they are.
Got it, yeah. That I'm clear on.
So it would strike me as if the, if the board was inclined to vote favorably with an altered vote to be brought back
Yes, always.
And for, at the twenty-second, that reflects the conversation of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dunn, then, Mr. Grille.
Sorry, Marie, when do we actually have to print the votes and comments?
Not until, I don't have the date in front of me, but towards the end of January.
We have another meeting before?
Yes, we have another meeting before.
The twenty-second.
The next meeting, because you'll have to approve the votes and comments. So it'll be the twenty-second.
All right.
But the warrant has to be there so they can get it out to the homeowners on the twenty-ninth.
Right, okay.
So I move, we recommend favorable action, and as always, when the wording comes back, we'll do the final approval.
Motion, Mr. Grille.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Mahon. Any further discussion? Mr. Dunn?
I'd like to beat a dead horse, just because I think this one's really important. And so this is an opportunity for me to, to beat that horse. I think it's real, quality of life, noise and quality of life are really big things, and they're very important. And some things that are very frustrating is when you get woken up. And so when someone gets woken up at three in the morning and they complain to me, I take great, it is easy for me to say, that was an emergency, we really had, you know, it had to happen, and I can explain that and I can defend that forever. And then there's some times where, in, like, after very careful consideration, it was better to do it late at night than it was to interfere during the day. Like paving mass av, for instance, like shutting down mass av during the middle of the day is, you know, really problematic. And yes, we're going to wake people up at two in the morning. And so, like, being able to, like, that structure and being able to say, when we're waking you up, it's for a good reason, and it's because someone really thought about it, that's really important to me. And I very much understand the problem that it says private way and we're doing public, our private property, we're doing public ways underneath it, and we probably should fix that someday, but this is, like, that, this is, that's the root of what I, what I would hope that the new language would encompass. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, a motion by Mr. Grille, second by Ms. Mahon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Now we move on to Article Four, Bylaw Amendment to Parking Benefits District Expenditures. Mr. Heid.
And just to be clear for folks, this is not ordinary, the ordinary process is that we take at least two hearings, but because of the timeline, I've tried to put together draft comments and votes in a little bit more of an aggressive schedule. I'm always receptive to whatever the board's, you know, comments need to be. The article with respect to the parking benefit district, as the board will recall, when the town adopted the Mass Municipal Modernization Act provision with respect to the creation of parking benefits districts, the Board of Selectmen and the town manager pledged that we would develop a process and codify it within the town bylaws for how those expenditures would be vetted and approved by both the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee with respect to capital planning expenditures, and eventually town meeting. Just for a refresher, the parking benefits district is basically a means of saying that revenues generated by parking meters or parking lots in a certain geographical location can be restricted for the use in those districts, whether it be to pay for parking enforcement, pay for improvements and servicing of parking meters, or larger things like capital improvements to the area, including beautification and other things that are a little bit broader, which is, I think, why the Finance Committee said that they were supporting this article, but they wanted us to come back with some kind of process. I've kept this pretty simple, deliberately for the purposes of not making this more complicated than it needs to be. It essentially outlines that expenditures are only supposed to be for those purposes set forth in Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two A and a half, that revenue estimates are to be generated on or before February first, shared with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee, and that the Parking Implementation Governance Committee, thank you, Mr. Kuro, for highlighting that sometimes I called it "and," and other times I called it just Parking Implementation Governance Committee. I believe it's the latter, not the former, that essentially they or some other designee of this board would essentially make recommendations for how these expenditure, how those revenues should be expended, and that the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee would respectively, for capital or operating expenses, make a recommendation to town meeting before town meeting ultimately endorsed those expenditures.
Thank you. Anyone have anything?
Move approval?
A motion to approve by Ms. Mahon. Mr. Dunn?
Just one, on, under B four, Town Meeting Endorsement, shall vote to endorse or disapprove. The intent of that is that if town meeting disapproves, that it can't be spent, right?
Well, I think the, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the intent is to reflect that that's what we want to do, that ultimately our position is that if they don't approve it, it's not going to be expended. I think, is that your?
Yeah, ma'am, Mr. Chair, so the tricky thing in all of this is that statutorily, none of this needs to be in place.
Okay.
These funds could be expended without Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, or a town meeting review or approval. But based on the dialogue with Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee that Town Council described, we committed to doing that. So I think, I think what Town Council's saying is, we're saying yes. If town meeting was to vote to disapprove, though we may have statutory authority to do so, otherwise, we would not expend the funds as, as had been proposed.
With the permission. It does raise a question, though, what if someone at town meeting puts forward an amendment? Are they able to amend where the funds go, as opposed to disapprove it?
So, Mr. Kuro, the answer is no, they can amend it to repurpose it for something that's not related to that parking benefits district. My understanding from talking to Mr. Tosti and Mr. Foskett is that they plan to essentially incorporate it in a relatively straightforward budget document, like they do with many other similar types of funds, and that, you know, someone might say, is that much money necessary for this specific type of thing, and adjust the amount? But I think it would be difficult for someone to propose a totally new purpose, and it would also be impossible for them to direct it to something that's not related to the revenue district.
But they could zero out one of the lines, presumably by amendment, to where this is structured, yeah.
In theory.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I also had raised, just one small issue, I think, in my correspondence to you, that we do reference at the Parking Implementation Governance Committee, but I'm not, whereas that was a body that was created by the town manager and
By the board.
This board. I'm not sure it's defined anywhere in the bylaws, and we'd probably need a definition to be added.
I can certainly do that, Mr. Kuro.
Yeah. I I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize. So back to my, this is an idea for, for everyone's consideration, I'm not sure it's fully baked. When we say town meeting shall vote to endorse or disapprove, that language implies that they have the power. And if we, if town meeting doesn't have that power, we can, we can probably change the language to make it more clear. And so maybe one way to do it is, like, town meeting shall be, or the advice and consent of town meeting, or the advice of town meeting shall be sought, as in, we will go to town meeting and ask them, but not actually trying to, like, right now, I feel like this language is trying to, like, have it both ways a little bit. And if we're not, if town meeting really doesn't have a yes, no on it, then let's make it a little bit more like that.
How do we say it for CDBG?
Endorse.
Endorse.
Endorse. Why don't we just mirror that language?
I suppose, would it meet your suggestion, Mr. Dunn, to say, the proposed expenditures shall be presented for endorsement to town meeting?
Yes.
Something of that nature.
That makes sense.
I think it's the word disapproved that's got me a little hung up.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we had always kind of envisioned this as a formulation similar to CDBG.
Okay.
It's my record.
So with all that, and we'll come back in final votes and comments at the same motion as
And I think towards that end, like, if we maybe in the comment draw really an explicit connection to the CDBG process, and that'll help, I think, get town meeting on board.
Yeah, and how they frame it and think about it.
Mr. Dunn, I believe we can make a reference to the votes and comments of last year's town meeting, which do, I think, reference the CDBG.
Yeah, but I think we should even, like, you know, say it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
Any further comments? A motion?
Yeah, I made it, and it's, I need a second.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rhodes, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you for that. And now we move on to Article Seven, which I believe is of no action, correct?
I'm sorry, yes.
Article Seven is appropriately of no action, I believe.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dunn, second by Ms. Mahon, yes.
I'm sorry, actually, members of the board, because the warrant has not been finalized, we can actually scrub it from the entire warrant, if the board would be so inclined. So it's up to you.
Do it.
Do it.
Take on no action to mean do it, or whatever.
Scrub Article Seven from the warrant.
Okay. Motion
Or with choice.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn.
It's a short and special town meeting.
Yes.
Only one thing to talk about.
Yeah, you have, you have an easy one, yeah, just one thing. Just one thing. Okay, we move back to item six, which is Discussion and Approval Autonomous Vehicle Testing Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we put this before the board for discussion and potential authorization or approval tonight. I, I know the board's aware that in late 2017, we hosted the MAPC, as well as some other experts in the area of autonomous vehicle development and testing, to present to the community, really at the impetus or the urging of Len Diggins, who works for ACMI and films, and the chair himself, who had shown a specific interest in this. We had a forum that was incredibly informational, very well-attended, and at that forum, we learned through the MAPC's Eric Barassa, who's also an Arlington resident, that there was this process that had been started of finding some local communities, working with MassDOT, who may be interested in allowing for some testing of autonomous vehicles on their roadways. So that was a conversation that happened between myself, the chair, and Eric Barassa, and we had expressed an interest in exploring it. The planning department has been on conference calls and gone to several meetings about the matter, and that is what has brought an MOU, a draft MOU, as well as a draft application for autonomous vehicle companies. The paper copies are the most up-to-date. The electronic version, there was an MOU, and then I received the application and an updated MOU today. The MOU basically says that we would cooperate with MassDOT on considering these applications and considering whether or not we want to allow autonomous vehicles to test in Arlington, and we would be able to restrict, you know, what roads they'd be on. I think I would envision certainly recommending that they only be allowed to be tested on more of our major roadways and not on neighborhood streets. But I think this seemed to me to be a way to show our citizens and our residents that we were taking a sort of a leading-edge view of a technology that's coming down the pipe and getting a front-row seat to understanding how it's going to impact Arlington's policies and transportation needs. So I would ask the board to consider authorizing me to execute the final MOU, and then bring it back to you for your, for your, just so that you could have it. If you're not comfortable with that, there is no hurry, so we could certainly also bring back a final, final MOU when it's available for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. I want to add just a little bit additional to that. Mr. Chaplin referenced Mr. Diggins, who does work for ACMI. He also is a very active, I think, I think it's the MBTA Writers Advisory Group, I believe, I believe it is. And they have taken a very active interest in this issue. Leaver spoke to me about this maybe nine months ago or something? I thought, wow, this is way out there in the future. It was quite interesting, when we had that forum It was quite interesting, when we had that forum down in the Town Hall, it was very well attended, and I had no idea the type of expertise we already have in the town, including Mr. Smith, who has served on the Transportation Advisory Committee for many years, is for the U.S. Department of Transportation, is on the International National Standard Setting Committee for these specific issues of autonomous vehicles. So the future is actually coming, and I think the point has been, it's probably best that we think about this at least, because it's going to come in our laps at one point or another. So I, I appreciate the Planning Department, the manager, talking to MAPC on, on, on this to position us to be able to potentially participate. I understand it doesn't commit us to anything at this point, though, so. Any further discussion or motions, or? Mr. Dunn?
I'll move approval, and I'll, and I'll say that, like, thinking about the, the children and grandchildren of the members of this board, Mr. Kuro, your kids are going to learn how to drive, have learned.
Yeah.
Mrs. Mahon, your grandson is never going to learn how to drive.
Yeah.
It's a good thing. He'll be safer. That's.
You know how much fun it is doing those parking lots and Monmouth Cemetery, and, oh! There are five years you could do without when your child.
It's already shaved ten or fifteen off of my life.
I'll second Mr. Dunn's motion, and I, I won't break the news to them yet. Four and one and a half.
This is a motion by Mr. Dunn, the second by Ms. Mahon. Any further, Mr. Greeley?
Yeah, I, I support it, but, so, Adam, I know you said there's no hurry. Do you see something happening soon on this with us? I mean, is there someone ready to come in and do a test of some sort, or?
Well, I think that they're working to get this MOU finalized, and.
Right.
I, I don't have a good timeline, but I know there are companies who are testing in Boston right now.
Yeah.
So I, I think they, it could happen pretty quickly.
But could, through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did, did other communities refuse it, like Belmont, Lexington, I see some of them, that aren't on there?
I don't, you know, I don't know the answer to that for sure. I would imagine they were just not approached and didn't, weren't aware of it.
Thank you.
We're on the cutting edge, Mr. Greeley.
Sorry, what?
We're on the cutting edge.
Well, we're, we are happening, I know that, but I was wondering whether there were reasons against this by communities, I don't know.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you very much for the, the work on that.
Thank you.
Now we move on to Board Designee for Committee Appointments to replace Stephen Byrne. Well, he's irreplaceable, but as we all know, that Mr. Byrne, when he left, he did have a portfolio of liaison and committee appointments. I'd like to put forward for the board's approval the following appointments. As our CDBG, one of our CDBG members, joining Mr. Dunn, Ms. Rowe, Parking Implementation Governance Committee, I'm happy to take that, take that on. School Committee Liaison, Mr. Greeley, and Snow and Ice Subcommittee Member, Ms. Mahon.
I think since they're your appointments, we don't need to vote on them.
We don't need to vote on them?
Unless anyone wants to comment.
No.
Is that correct?
I move endorsement.
Endorsement, here we are.
The E-word!
Okay, there's a motion, a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Ms. Rowe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Notice, the guy who moved endorsement is the one who, I didn't put anything more on his plate.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
You'll, you'll have it when we get to, get to our warrant.
Don't worry about it.
Okay. Moving on to Correspondents' Receive, Airbnbs in Arlington, Louise A. Gorham, Bellingham, Mass, who I believe was planning to come speak to us, but apparently.
No, she's asking to.
She did, she did ask to.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, but I, I believe she was notified of, of this. I suppose we could, I don't know if the board has stomach for a discussion. I don't know if we're in a position yet. I know that there's some legislation at the state level that, that's, that's moving around Airbnbs, but I think that's more on the revenue side.
Taxation, yeah.
Yeah.
If I may, I would suggest if the board is so inclined to refer this to the, the town manager's office, I would most likely ask Inspection Services, Town Council, and the Planning and Community Development Department to provide some background to the board, to then be able to provide a response to this resident.
Okay.
And I think the short answer is, there's not a clear answer on its allowance or disallowance in our zoning bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Greeley, seconded by Ms. Mahon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, it's unanimous. We now move on to new business. Ms. Kropelka?
I have nothing other than, I was going to say that I needed the report for Thursday, but truth, I'll agree to that, so that's fine.
There we go. Thank you very much, you and staff, for all the work on that. Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a few pieces. The first I want to say is, I, I want to give a big public thank you to the Department of Public Works employees for their tremendous efforts over the past four, four to five days. They started on Thursday, they worked 24 hours straight fighting the storm. We received 17 inches of snow in Arlington, which I think was one of the highest totals, if not the highest total in the region. So it was a serious, a serious accumulation. So they worked 24 hours straight, were off Friday, came back in Saturday. During the day, we had a Natural Resources crew, we're cruising all day cleaning up problem areas. We had crews working overnight on Saturday, crews working overnight on Sunday night, and I think the result is, though, certainly not perfect, the Avenue and Broadway are much more accessible, crosswalks are open, sidewalks are open, and I really think they just did a tremendous job. So I want to thank them for that.
And can I add to that, also sandwiched in there, they had three water pipe breaks.
Yes, yeah.
So when they, you know, in their downtime, they, I'm sure they had a little bit of downtime, but they also were addressing those issues. It's the same group of employees that, so for them to pull off two different yeoman tasks, the storm event and the water main down by Brad, I won't get into the places, but we know where they were. But thank you, Mr. Manager, for saying that.
The other two are related to MMA business. The town was awarded the MMA Innovation Award for the vacant storefront registry. We had applied for that. It would, the MMA beacon that this board receives had done a story on the vacant storefront registry some time ago. So it was, and it was sort of being heralded as new and interesting, so we applied for the innovation award, and we received it. So we will be officially receiving that at the MMA Annual Meeting, not this Friday, but not, sorry, next Saturday, which I'll be there to receive the award, and then we'll bring it back to town. So that was, that was exciting. And related to that, at the MMA Annual Meeting, two weeks from now, I will officially become the Mass Municipal Managers Association President for the year.
Oh, wow.
So tremendous power is about to be bestowed upon.
Congratulations.
Tremend, just another layer of emails and complaints and questions, I'm sure, but.
The man behind the MMA curtain.
But I did want to, I did want to let the board know. You know, I, I.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I don't want to say premature, but I want to jinx it.
It's a lock.
He's unopposed, by the way.
Yes, exactly, exactly, exactly. So I, I really enjoy, you know, being able to serve in that capacity, and I think it provides me a lot of opportunities to learn about what's happening in the state and then bring it back to Arlington, so. And that's all I have.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Greeley?
And for them to learn from you and bring back to their communities, yet another way you excel. Thank you. Congratulations on that. I just want to piece, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we take the process you put before this board, which ended with us choosing brilliantly Clarissa Rowe to be put in the handbook. All the town bylaw, all the town manager acts was remissly placed within 30 days.
Okay.
But your process, which is our preferences for a former selectman, our preferences of someone not intending to run, that we ask for applications and we open for nominations and vote.
So let me suggest that somebody who's intimately familiar with the handbook drafting process, maybe bring that back for the next agenda or.
Okay.
An upcoming agenda, and we'll, we'll endorse it at that point.
Okay, but it's your process, but yes.
Yeah, oh, I'm, I'm happy to, yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sure.
We'll bring it, yeah, we'll bring it back and we'll endorse it.